To order the Tuesday, September 5th, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Ms. G, can you please take the roll?
Ms. Hockenberry.
Here.
Mr. Krasner.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Eads.
Here.
Wodisca.
Here.
Mr. DeJean has indicated that he would be absent tonight, and so far, Mr. Rankin is absent.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt this evening's agenda?
I'll second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, let's adopt this. This is a short agenda. All we have on here is new business related to City Hall. We have a variance application, V1592-17, and another site amendment, essentially the same issue, but are we getting a singular proposal this evening? Or, yeah, okay, makes sense. With that, you may bring us up to date.
Thank you. Akita Ruzi with Planning, good evening. The City Hall Site Plan Amendment was approved by the Planning Commission on July 17th, contingent on staff review of the revised site plan and administrative approval. Since then, staff has reviewed revised site plan and identified a number of variances that require BZA approval and recommendation from the Planning Commission. The variances include stacking of parking spaces within the parking structure, parking spaces less than nine feet install width and less than 18 feet install length, two-way drive aisles of less than 23 feet in width, and to omit a required loading zone parking space. These variances are presented to you today for your recommendation to the BZA, and the BZA meeting is scheduled for September 14th. In addition, staff is also looking for your final consideration of the site plan amendment tonight. Since the Planning Commission approval on July 17th, staff and the project team has worked together in refining aspects of the site plan. Most staff comments have been addressed, and those needing additional work are included as conditions of approval in the proposed motion, which I'll go over shortly. With regards to the variances, the loading zone variance, parking space, and drive aisle variances are being requested for existing non-conforming elements of the site, which do not meet the current code standards. The project team has agreed to bring these non-conformities up to code standards in the future City Hall parking improvements projects, but in the meantime, they are seeking variance approvals as short-term response to those non-conformities. And those notes have been included in the final site plan, which is what's before you for approval tonight. The applicant is also requesting a variance to allow stacking of parking within the proposed police parking structure, a condition that is not expressly permitted in the zoning code. The current code envisions a parking layout with drive aisles that provide direct access to parking spaces. To deviate from that, and that's what the applicant is proposing today, they'll need a variance. Additionally, as part of the site plan amendment, the applicant is also seeking a waiver for parking reduction based on the parking analysis that was provided by the applicant. The City Hall campus requires 453 parking spaces, and with the proposed site plan, there will be 200 onsite parking spaces. So the applicant is seeking a parking reduction of 56 percent. The existing parking count of 201 spaces did not meet the current code ratio, so the waivers, another short-term response from the applicant for an existing non-conformity. With that, the proposed motion that's before you today is a recommendation for approval of the variance application to the BZA and approval of the site plan amendment with the requested waiver for parking reduction. If you have any questions, I can take them now, or I can give the floor to the project team for their presentation, and I can take questions after.
Thank you. I have a quick question before you begin. I just want to understand the two items. The variance application, the V1592-17, seems fairly self-explanatory. It's got three major items to it. The second one, 2017-0658, I'm not sure, why is it an issue that we have to, why does the Planning Commission have to allow construction of an attached one-story parking garage? What is happening that is requiring the Planning Commission to act?
So, site plans triggered, with this project, a site plan is triggered for the square footage that's being added, which is above the 25 square feet, and also for land disturbance, which is about the 1,500 square feet of land disturbance. So this requires a site plan, and site plan requires a Planning Commission approval.
Got it.
And so that you're not so confused about the July 17th meeting, you did have one site plan in front of you for approval, and revised site plan was submitted, and we didn't have enough time to review that before a staff report was issued.
I recall.
So what was approved then didn't have staff review attached to it, so we've done that after the approval on the July 17th meeting. And so this is, today is sort of an update of the staff review and administrative approval, and bringing back everything to you for review and a final approval.
Got it.
The variances are recommendations to BZA.
I think I understand now. I do understand now. Okay.
I just have one quick question, and I'm sure staff looked at this and then concluded this was the only way to go, but City Council can't waive any of this. This all has to go to actual variance from the ordinance, because this is all in the zoning ordinance, and so there's no other way to waive these requirements.
We didn't see any other mechanisms, other than the variances and the waiver approval, which is a Planning Commission consideration at this time, since it is a site plan for an office use.
Right.
But no, there was no City Council.
And for like, I'm just trying, I mean, how common is it that, I mean, when I was on the BZA, I don't recall too many applications for, you know, variances to stall width and, you know, these technical, you know, these technical requirements for, you know, parking, and I guess the question is, you know, has a commercial landowner had to ever asked for one of these variances in the last year, a couple of years in your memory?
So I believe that section of the code, the new standards for the stall width and stall length, is actually a newer addition to the code.
Okay.
And we have been requiring commercial developers to comply with that standard.
Right.
But so far, this is, I think this is the only variance I've seen recently, unless there's an older.
And the stall width is, that's, are any of this related to the existing parking on the site?
It is all existing parking.
All existing.
Right, that's what I thought, right.
So the only variance that's.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
The only variance that's created with the proposed site plan is the stacking of the parking spaces within the proposed new garage, the police garage. So all the other variances, which is the parking space dimensions, drive aisle dimensions, and the loading space, they're all existing non-conformities. Their immediate response was to go ahead and get this approval for variances, and then later on include as part of the future CRP projects to improve the lot and the parking to re-stripe and bring everything into conformance with the zoning code.
There was no way to conclude that those existing spaces were, you know, for private property, you know, if it's been existing for long enough time and taxed, it can be considered vested, you know, and not, and essentially, I mean, for lack of a better word, grandfathered. There was no way to conclude that the existing spaces, you know, had any protection because they've been pre-existing for decades.
No.
No.
They needed a variance. The site plan ordinance reads that anytime when there's a site plan filed, you have to bring all the non-conformities into compliance with the applicable zoning ordinance, and that was the section we're going off of.
Okay, that's fine, and I know, I just wanted to get some of that out there. I'm sure you guys looked at that.
Sense, yeah.
Otherwise, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't be here, going through the process, but, yeah, okay.
One question, if I might. Just curious on the loading zone, for the functions that theoretically occur today that you're asking for the waiver for, where do those take place? Where do things get loaded today?
I'll actually let Spencer weigh in on that.
Good evening, Planning Commission, Cindy Mester, and I'm turning the formal presentation over to Mr. Mack, but right now, it's generally in the back or FedEx and UPS just pull up in the front, run the stuff in. So with this new design, we'll be able to consolidate where in the building those are coming, but we will not have an official loading dock until we redo.
It's not for prisoners.
They'd still come in through the.
Before you begin, Ms. Hockenberry.
Okay, let me try to get this straight, because you're asking for a variance on the size of the parking spaces, yet I just heard you say this was something new in the code, that these dimensions were in the code.
The variance for the existing.
Yeah, so that section of the code is newer, yes, but it is there, and the existing parking now doesn't conform with those standards, so they're requesting a variance.
Okay, so that's the variance.
That's right.
And we've never granted any stacking parking anywhere in the city.
We've, three of the mixed-use projects have some small amounts of them.
Okay.
When we surveyed them last year, they were conforming to the approved site plans.
Okay, that's always good to know.
It does exist in three, Spectrum, Pearson, one other.
And the variance, and the variance for decrease in number of parking spaces, is that for the whole campus?
It is for the whole campus, yeah.
Okay, so we've got a couple of different, we've got specific for the garage, then we've got specific for the whole campus.
So we're looking at one, the 453 spaces that is required for the entire City Hall campus, and that includes Gage House, Community Center, the City Hall Building, and the Cherry Hill Park. So that's a waiver that's associated with the site plan amendment that's up for your approval tonight, but the variance for stacked parking is within the proposed garage only. That's the only place where the stacked parking takes place.
So again, we're not adding any new staff or public parking?
We are not adding any new public. There's going to be some parking that are eliminated, and there's going to be new parking that's added, but there is a net loss of one space, but there is no gain.
Well, I know that, you know, I'm probably going to preface this, I was not able to be here when the vote came on this, and so I'm still smarting a little bit, because are we making any progress with getting parking across the street at the doctor's medical building?
No formal agreement, but we are still working with 313 Park Avenue and 200 Little Falls for shared parking for City Hall function, carts, formers, marking, and special events.
Because we've always, everybody always said we need more parking, and obviously, we're not getting that with this expansion.
Not with this site plan amendment, we are looking for a future CIP project where we could reconfigure the entire campus parking, because we know we could pick up additional parking that way, but we are still pursuing the off-site parking agreements pursuant to the zoning ordinance allowance.
So there's all kinds of fixes in the future.
Correct, but not within the limited site plan amendment that's before you.
Mr. Mack, why don't you give us your presentation? I'm sure we'll have other questions.
Sure. All right, thank you, Planning Commission. So like Akita said, today we're asking Planning Commission's approval for the site plan and also waiver for the parking space reduction, as well as a recommendation to carry the variances we've all been talking about forward to the BZA on the 14th. Yeah. And just to reiterate, this is a project that's always been public safety as the primary goal. I'll kind of roll through this. The background, you guys all know this, initial site plan, we brought this in May 30th. We had this site plan amendment approved on July 17th with the condition for administrative verification. We went back and forth, staff went back and forth with the site plan to get it to where it is today, and so through that process, we identified a waiver and a few variances that came up out of that process, as well as addressing all the staff concerns. So this is just a real quick summary of changes from when you last saw in July. We modified the pedestrian circulation around the building here, including a crosswalk that's in the back, right here. We modified the front entry, tree pit, and kind of the ramp wall in the front, and then covered bike parking was moved from the back up to the front east lane. And then like, we kind of touched on earlier, we added a bunch of notes to commit to future CIP projects, to redo the parking as a campus-wide solution, to address, you know, various streetscape issues along Little Falls and Park, and other things like loading space and all that. So that's all added as notes in the site plan, but again, with this limited scope, limited budget, we just couldn't do it as part of this, as part of the site plan amendment. There are renderings that you've seen before, we weren't able to get them updated for today, so I'm skipping over. And other clarifications, we modified the TDM PMP a little bit, we fixed the parking tabulations, you'll probably see that redlined in your plans there, and we also identified waivers and variances that we've talked about before. So today, we're here to talk through the approval of site plan amendment and waiver for the parking reduction, 56 percent parking reduction, variance to allow the non-conforming parking spaces in the drive aisles. Again, this is the existing drive aisles and parking spaces we have out there. In the future, we plan to come back as part of a maintenance effort to really redo this, but we feel that, or staff feels that that should be really done as part of something that's looked at at the whole campus, the park, the community center, and the City Hall, and we feel that there could be a gain there when we redo, when we re-stripe and kind of fix up a lot of these weird spaces that we have out there, but again, this is just not the project to do it with. And then the other variance to allow stacking in the garage area, which would really benefit law enforcement operations and their use of that space. Then the variance to omit a required loading space, again, a lot of these variances are trying to maintain what's out there existing, and then our plan is to come back and address these, but it's just not as part of this project. We'd rather do them part of a more holistic campus-wide project. A little bit more about going into the details of these variances for parking spaces and drive aisle dimensions. Current plan doesn't worsen the existing condition, it's a loss of one parking space, but bringing the site up to code, widening the existing drive aisles, widening the existing parking spaces, there will be a significant loss of parking spaces if we do that. And so, again, our solution is that we'll bring this up in a future effort when we do regular maintenance of the parking lot as part of other CIP projects, to come in and address parking at that time. And again, we've noted that in the site plan amendment. The variance for tandem spaces in the secure garage, this is really a critical part of how that garage functions and how that space is going to be used. Right now, it allows us to have 23 law enforcement vehicles for police, courts, and sheriff, and so if we weren't allowed to use that, I think it goes down to like 13 or 14 spaces. So it's just a really large impact to that space. And we also feel that the conflicts between, that are introduced by tandem parking, you know, first off, this is a public space, public safety-only space, so it's not really meant to address, meant to be accessed by the public, and then there will be, there will be operational procedures in place, like we'll have a new key system that allows, you know, any officer to open any car with this certain key, and so that, we hope, will eliminate a lot of these conflicts that will occur with tandem parking. And this is, and then the last part is the waiver for parking reduction. Again, we're asking for a 56 percent waiver of parking reduction. Right now, with the tabulations, we're showing that by code, we need to provide 453 parking spaces onsite. The current project provides 200 spaces, the current site has 201 spaces. We feel that right now, this is not at a dysfunctional level, on, you know, there are certain times of peak demand when the site is stressed, but right now, we just feel in the future, we'll try to address it, we'll have a more efficient footprint, a more efficient layout, but we just can't do it as part of this project. And then this is really the upcoming milestones. Again, September, we're here in front of you, and then we'll be going to the BZA on the 14th, and then we hope to get construction documents done in October, with the negotiated price in November, construction beginning December, and then we're looking at a 12-month construction schedule on that. And I think we've brought this up before, really trying to get in this as soon as we can, like, we're pretty much starting at the very beginning of winter, and so really critical for us to move quickly on this project. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions?
I have a couple of comments. Well, this is a question, I'm sure there's not much that can be done about it anyway, so I'm sure it's fine, but, so right now, it sounds like some of the loading, the non-FedEx, non-UPS loading happens in the back, but with the new, the back basically becoming secure, is that, will there be a spot back there, or is loading more likely to happen out front and disrupt people like me more?
Yeah, I think right now, we do envision it coming in through the front. We could, yeah, unfortunately.
Yeah, I suspect that's not what you can do, I just want to be able to say like, when everyone's complaining about it in a year, wow, I predicted that. I'm sure if you could have found a better place, you would, but I mean, this is, this is a challenge, which.
And I think part of that will be, as we start getting used to the new space and how it functions, that we could try to convert one of these rear doors or something like that, or have some kind of other entry system for delivery drivers. Again, the problem is, right now, we just, we don't have a space put out for loading, we don't know exactly where that space would go with the, with the site we have.
Yeah, I'm sure it's tough. And then stacked parking, if we deny that, they're probably not going to ticket themselves, so they could probably work it out in there, however they want to do that. And then I still, I mean, it's, this ship has sailed, so I'll just throw in that last comment. I still think the secure parking area is confusingly complicated and expensive for what we're achieving. I still don't understand why a fence or a wall couldn't have achieved essentially the same thing, but I love the police, so hopefully it will make them. They'll be nice to you. I was talking to Chief Gavin this morning, she was checking out the bus stop, so hopefully it'll be good for them, but I still think, really, it seems kind of like a lot, but otherwise, I think, whatever, seems like, seems like if you were a commercial developer, we'd be laughing at you right now, but. And we'd refuse it. But I understand that what we're up against is not a commercial development, it's the public safety stuff, so.
What kind of truck, just real quick, I don't want to belabor this either, but what kind of trucks do we typically, we're not getting tractor-trailer deliveries here, are we?
No, and I think that was part of the point, is, you know, we're usually having single-unit trucks coming through, we don't.
Like the UPS guy, the FedEx.
Right, exactly.
I guess you get some office supplies delivered, right?
Right.
But you're not getting.
Right, we're not getting an 18-wheeler coming through and trying to drop something off.
And the UPS guy probably comes once a day for 20 minutes, or not even 10 minutes, and then he's out of here, and, yeah.
Right.
Okay, all right, well, that's right.
Lindy?
Okay, let's talk about the green roof. It doesn't seem to be functional for anything. And number 10, and all the answers, there's no specific green roof area requirement, as all stormwater is being handled by other site infrastructure. Current area is designed to reduce the occupancy based on the available means of egress for the patio. And so we are building a patio. And, you know, in the, in the past, if we did a green roof, it was part of stormwater reduction.
Right, yeah, so I think that green roof, we've already got a stormwater system onsite that handles the flow.
But why call it a green roof, then?
I mean, there is some stormwater benefit, I guess, because it's not an impervious surface, but its, its primary objective is not to be a stormwater.
And always, a green roof has always been part of our environmental planning, so it's a mis, kind of a misnomer. The other thing that I really, in reading all the way through this, and I know I'm being tough, I was tough, you know, in the preceding meeting before the vote, but unfortunately, I could not walk to be here, or I could not get here, I was incapacitated, but in the 2017-0652, you've got, and all the way through, you've got to allow construction of an attached one-story parking garage with a one-story building addition above, and it is not a whole addition. And if we're going to be specific, I think you should have a percentage, partial, or something, but I don't think the world needs to be thinking that we're putting a whole addition on the top of that garage, because I think that's misleading.
For this, I'd like to comment on the green roof one, and then I'm not, it's a good point.
Thank you.
That you've noted, I don't know if it is requesting a response. The green roof is above what we would need for stormwater, because that is addressed per the existing stormwater detention and BMP under the tennis courts. So this is above what would be required, but it is part of our LEED certification for overall.
It is attached to something for drainage and everything, and the stormwater.
Yeah, so it has all the, it's all the green roof design, it's just wasn't required to meet our stormwater calculations.
Okay, thank you.
This rendering, as Mr. Mack indicated, is not current in terms of that we're working to refine some of the designs and architecture here, but you can see, we do have a railing and a patio functional area, so it is designed to have some functional use as well. We can note your comment about the clarification.
Is there a necessity for that? Is there a necessity for a functional roof?
I don't think there's a necessity, but we felt that it was valuable, since we had this green roof up there, just not to have a white membrane or have something that couldn't be accessed for a little bit of public amenity space or employee gathering, we're envisioning a couple picnic tables.
How about having some type of a caveat that we do not have a one-story addition on top of the one-story garage? I look at it, eyeballing it, it looks like 40 percent. It'd be different, because I don't have the exact figures of the size of the garage and the size of the.
We certainly would be glad to work with state staff to make sure it's clarified, the rendering in the site plan, make it clear that it's not a one-full addition on top.
Thank you. I had one more. And looking at the plans, there's a, for the new chambers, there's a corridor that goes kind of like in the back here. I would imagine that is for the judge and other people coming in that way, but I couldn't see where the main entrance for the public was.
Main entrance for the public would be through, you look at the west entrance, and you go straight through, then there's a little vestibule, and that vestibule connects you to the new addition.
Okay, so it's, that's probably separated out from the new addition or something, or, no, that can't be, that can't be, that can't work. Yeah, okay, never mind.
Unfortunately, I don't have this photo, but it'd be essentially like a, the new addition, a piece of the new addition would come off this back wall, so you'd enter that, that would be your vestibule, and then you'd hang a right and go into the new.
I'm still concerned about the addition for room for staff, because, you know, we're going to be growing. I just, I'm, I know, I'm, I'll shut up.
With that, anybody else have any other comments? Well, Lindy, I mean, I think it was certainly spoken, I know by myself and others, that what we're getting here for what we're spending is disappointing. That was certainly my.
Extremely disappointing.
What my vote was, but in terms of my own view on these particular variances, they seem fairly benign to me. It's all about existing, stacking of parking spaces for the police, doesn't warrant.
The variances are not that big a deal.
Doesn't warrant much discussion, so, I mean, I think these are reasonable in light of the overall project. If anybody else has a different view, I haven't heard it, so I think, unless we want to talk about this anymore, I'm willing to. Well, Lindy, do you see on here, on this motion, by the way, anything that you wanted to change related to that building, the size of the building? I didn't see it here, and I didn't.
Well, it's just listed, every single, every time they refer to it within all these documents, it's the same language, it's to allow construction of a one-story parking garage with a one-story building addition above.
No, I am agreeing, I don't see it in the motion, actually, that's what, unless there was some language that you wanted to change there, I didn't see anything that was.
No, but within that, you know, it's, that, it's in that language there that just, because once it's down there, you know, they're going to, people are going to say, oh, I thought we were going to, you know, but I don't think the public is going to get what they think they're getting on this one. they're getting on this one.
I haven't seen a transportation demand management plan as it relates to the reduction of parking. I mean, I know it's the same essentially as we got now, one space difference, but have we seen that TDM? Because I don't remember seeing it.
There is something here.
There is a TDM that's attached to the report. It's the very last attachment. It's also printed on the cover sheet of the site plan. Yeah, so the parking reduction is accompanied with, by a TDM plan for this project.
I see it now. Was this just up here? Did I miss it in the packet, or?
It's in the packet.
I, I had two of them, so maybe I...
Oh, I didn't see it. I really, I'm surprised.
She got hers.
Took my TDM.
Yeah, I stole it.
Okay, all right, well, I hadn't seen it, so I see it's right here in front of me now. All right, I haven't reviewed it, obviously, based on my admission, I didn't get it, but if it's here, then... Did anybody else review it? Tim, you can bail me out, it looked good.
Yeah, no, it did. I just had one question on the, the bike share subscriptions, which I think you're going to allow a certain number of them for internal transportation purposes. I was just wondering, is there any consideration to making some of those subscriptions available to employees for commuting, to encourage them not to drive their cars here and park?
Yes, the subscriptions could be for that. We're currently working, for example, to kick off the no-car day on the 22nd, and so we're going to work to sort of test interest and encourage commuter connection, guaranteed ride, and looking at bike share. We do, besides providing the actual subscriptions, which we put in the TDM for business within the city, we do have a benefits through our wage work, where we can do pre-tax transit discounts, and so there's both transit and bike options, and so we would probably initially look, which I have referenced as a future adapted model, to do it through our benefits program.
Potential incentives work.
Tim, are you going to ask about electric cars along that back?
Well, weren't we already told there's going to be a couple?
Well, I didn't see it mentioned in this site plan.
I didn't see it either. I was hoping you'd ask.
That there are going to be a couple charging stations, and possibly more, I thought I saw.
Well, I know you mentioned the, in the last meeting, you mentioned something about conduit that was, was going to be installed, and I couldn't tell if that was for the charge stations, or the potential for the, for the canopy, solar canopy at some future date.
Those would be... Oh, yeah, I think those would be for future charging stations, but I can go back and review that. Solar canopies, they wouldn't need conduit, would they?
Or, for, I'm sorry?
Would solar stations need conduit?
Well, you need some way to get, you know, an electrical connection back to wherever a solar canopy would be.
Oh, right, okay, I see what you mean. No, yeah, so those conduits were meant for future EV charging stations.
Charge stations, okay. And there's two in the back, and, and then, I think we'd also talked about the possibility, if we could get some funding, you could put a couple in the front, and that I at least wanted to make sure the electrical system could easily permit that.
Yeah, we can, and we can work with the architect to incorporate some conduit up front, too.
That would be good. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, can I ask one other thing?
Of course, of course.
Okay, how are we doing on the lighting outside? The best thing about all those plans, you're just taking out my favorite, streetlight out there, that has never worked, and, you know, this...
It's never after a plane.
And, you know, and you go down in the dark and hope you're going to get down the stairs safely, but I saw that that was out, but you got, got to be dealing with all the lighting for the area.
Good thing, one, the lights right on the stairs will be corrected and adjusted, so they're working and not blowing the circuits, but we've already had Dominion out, and we're working with Dominion on the campus, because we have a lot of old infrastructure that keeps getting wet, cut, and going out, and so they're doing a holistic review of all our parking lot lights, park lights, et cetera.
Yeah, yes.
Hopefully rewiring them.
Needs updating greatly.
Well, they're also not in conduit, so every time it, something happens out there, they're getting wet, cut, et cetera.
All right, if we don't have any other questions, I am willing to entertain a motion
Someone else seems to want to do it. Okay.
It's controversial.
That the planning commission recommends approval to the Board of Zoning Appeals for variance application V-1592-17, and that the planning commission grants approval of the site plan amendment application 2017-0658 contingent on approval of variance application V-1592-17 by the Board of Zoning Appeals, subject to the following conditions. Sidewalk near the east corner of the building shall be relocated to curve away from tree number 139, closer towards the existing curb, in order to save the existing oak tree. All required hose bibs shall be shown on-site plan and installed in accordance with comments from the city arborist. Applicants shall work with the city arborist on the appropriate selection of landscaping for the proposed green roof above the garage. Applicants shall implement all aspects of the site plan dated August 14, 2017, that responds to staff comments dated July 28, 2017, and applicants shall make reasonable efforts to implement all items noted on the site plan dated August 14, 2017, and future CIP and other future project efforts.
Okay. Ms. G, can you take a roll call vote?
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Krasner?
Yes.
Ms. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Teetz?
Yes.
Woodisca?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with Mr. John Abson.
All right, moving on to other business, there is none, then approval of minutes from the August 7, 2017 meeting. Thank you to staff for this presentation. You're an easy group.
Except for one. No, could I just say, you know, I've said, "Miss Master," but, you know, even that meeting, even before July 17th, whatever that meeting was, for the work session, I was very profuse in my thanking you for all the work you've done on this and everything. I just am very disappointed in the fact that I don't think, I think we met everything for the goals for the police department, and I don't think we met any goals for the staff, and I really don't. And I'm a very much pro-staff, pro-teacher, you know, important to me.
You just hit the gun.
Pro, yeah, but...
What?
Oh, yeah, okay. Pro, pro-police, but there, and I, I know the reasons they have to have it, but I don't think they should be the only recipients of, of this action. I really don't. Thank you.
Any comments on the meeting minutes from August 7? One.
Moved it, and then she was absent.
Yeah, I ran away.
East was there.
Can we look at line 495, Ms. G? Yeah, last page. Ms. Teetz's vote.
On 496, it should be myself and Mr. Rankin voted no. Just for prosperity here. We voted no, and then we voted to get the minutes approved and leave.
Two.
Chair.
Yeah, it's three, two, two.
Yeah.
And, and may I make one other, on, line 385, I don't think that that was the gist of what I was saying, because I think that I was concerned about, you know, hearing at that point in time about all the needs of the church. I was fully aware of the needs of the Snyder family, so if you could just, I don't know, delete that, because it wasn't what I meant to say, it wasn't what I said at all. It was inching, but, you know, it was just the whole response of me saying, well, I wasn't aware, all of a sudden, all the church needs were coming out in that evening.
I agree, Lindy, I don't remember that being your sentiment. Anything else?
Happy September.
All right, can I get a motion to pass the agenda with those adjustments just reviewed?
I am moved that we approve the minutes with the amendments discussed.
As amended, perfect.
I'll second it.
These official ones.
I know, as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Maybe I was only half here.
Four of us. All right. I feel like the next item is going to be planning commission reports.
Yeah.
And they are?
It's like your psychic.
Any reports? Mr. Stevens?
I do have a couple of items. The, the minutes do indicate that I attempted to call in at the last meeting, but unfortunately, the phone system wasn't working. I think it is important to have the opportunity to call in electronically when we're not able to be here physically, so I, I'm certainly willing to, to help out if a volunteer is needed to test the system, to kind of make sure it's in working order. I've seen it work for city council meetings, so apparently, it can work.
Well, I completely agree. I want to say that that night, there was some power issues with the building.
The, the Sunday and the Monday, there were power issues, and the phone system was down.
Yeah, right. But the system is not amazing, even when it works, so I think it's a fair comment.
Is it a VoIP system, not a hard line? Because if it's like internet-based phones, they go down all the time.
Yeah, the, the problem is, they can hear us, we, or, we could hear them, but they couldn't hear us. That was, when Mrs. Rod, when Ms. Rogers did it, that was her comment. She, we could hear her perfectly, but she could barely hear us.
I did watch you all on TV, so I, I felt your pain.
That's just such a small part of the pain that we had.
I did have one other item.
Yeah, go for it.
There was a, I thought it was an interesting article in the Wall Street Journal. It was on hotel building boom stalls in the US, and this is apropos of the Founder's Row application, and there's been a lot of suspicion on the fact that the hotel has been withdrawn, and, you know, we don't know the specific circumstances there yet, but I thought it would be useful for us to be aware of the, the bigger picture in terms of the US, and it does appear that, whereas, as recent as three years ago, there was a lot of interest in the part of the development community to build hotels, that that has waned rather considerably in the very recent terms, so if anybody wants a copy of this, I'm happy to try to make that.
Well, that is especially timely, since we are also talking about a hotel up by the...
Right.
...school site.
That's right.
You want to make a report on the economic meeting?
Yeah, sure. We, we met on Friday, and we talked really mostly about strategy and, and how to put out the RFP. There was a lot of discussion about some of the harder choices in terms of that document, how much we wanted to prescribe to the development community versus just give them general guidelines. And there are going to be some tough decisions that are going to have to be made about, you know, what we, for example, a hotel, to say that we are, you know, want a hotel, that's a requirement, or whether that would be a nice thing to see. While the planning commission was not part of the original process, when they initially solicited bids, apparently, the response to that, that request for proposals without any sort of requirements was not satisfactory to the city council.
You're talking about the, back when they did the public-private-secret squirrel stuff?
Yes, I was exactly right. I, I don't, still don't know what's in those documents, but it's been clear that they were unhappy with it, and that was with the RFP that said...
It was not prescriptive.
Not prescriptive at all. And really, that the needs of the community are different than the development community, but there's going to be trade-offs. You say we want a hotel, then that means it might bring down the, the brown lease price and the upfront cost, I mean, there's a, there's a bunch of trade-offs, and I think...
Might mean no project at all.
Might mean no project at all, though, I don't suspect that's the, that's not what they're indicating, but those are decisions that are going to have to be made here in the next couple of months.
No, I think it was just mainly discussion, not much towards conclusions.
Oh, no, no, definitely no conclusions, I mean, just...
And my only thing that I, I take away all the time is that this group is working strictly, you know, economic stuff, which is great, and it's talking, they're talking about the road shows and everything, which I, you know, think is great going out to developers, but in doing that, I think it's very important that the entire city be considered, as far as the city is a place, wonderful place to live and bring up families, school systems, et cetera, and not, and then, oh, by the way, we've got this land that we'd like to have developed, so I really would like to see a more holistic approach, you know, just in a more inclusionary, because what we get is the schools, and, and they're talking, they're talking that, and then the economic group is talking economics, and I think you've got to bring a lot of pieces together when they go out and try to do anything.
I agree, and, and when I say the next couple of months, I mean, basically, those types of decisions are completely on hold until the referendum vote is over. It's just to sort of begin to think about it, how we want to do it, whether it's an RF. It sounds like it's going to be a two-part process, is the thought, assuming the referendum passes, which is a big assumption, but nothing's happening, really, other than trying to prepare for that, till we can move quickly, but we're not going on any road shows, we're not developing a strategy around that until we decide as a community that this is something we're going to be willing to pay for.
I, last week, went to the EDC meeting, I think you were there, I'd be there. They spent more time than I would have talking about the lights on the downtown street. I don't even know. If anyone knows, wants to know about that, go to one of those meetings. They also said, I guess Target is aiming for opening next spring, which would be cool, and that since Target news broke, there's been a lot of interest in the other spaces over there for restaurants and things like that, with the exception of those little portico retails along Maple, so they, they suggested that the landlord would be willing to essentially give those, you know, let people use those for no rent, however, they're not built out or anything, so the community, so the community could, I don't know, if someone could pull together some money, build some space out, use them pop-up store for the holidays, something like that, or, you know, maybe they just become giant window boxes for Target, but... And then, they did mention that the Broad and Washington projects still kind of bouncing around, and that there had been some changes, I guess we're going to, maybe Gary knows more about that, get updates soon, but they're still working with the neighbors on the height, but it sounded like some of the other things, like three-bedroom units and other things have gone, gone away, so it seems to me like that's inching forward, I would think, but I'm hoping that that will come to us at some point here on the planning commission.
Pop-up things, are those little things?
Portico retail.
A pain in the neck, he said.
Yes, I think everybody knew that they were a little silly.
I hate to say we told you so.
It would be cool, if they can't do anything with it, if community groups, if we set up some kind of schedule, and community group could have it a month at a time.
Yeah, I think that...
So, you could put the food waste stuff in there.
Yeah, I think the challenge would be getting somebody to pay for some minimal build-out, because I doubt you could get occupancy permit right now, but maybe ED, EDA or somebody could throw in some build-out, and, yeah, just like, share it.
So, I, I wonder if a community group could pay for the build-out, if they could get the space for free?
I mean, that's what they...
I believe the answer to that was yes, according to what we heard.
That's what the EDO was...
We should bring that up at a meeting we're having next week.
Yeah, so that would be cool, I think. I mean, anything would be better than them sitting there unfinished with their see-through glass windows.
I've always wanted a tourist kiosk of some kind.
Yeah, throw a museum in there.
It's probably not the good place for it, but, eh, we could try.
And I'm sure we talked about other things, but I don't recall, and I left my notes at my...
There was an interesting proposal about a development at Park and Lee. It was a 70-unit live-and-work, which was kind of interesting.
Yeah, that was interesting. It's like 70 condos. It's like 70 condos, and their commercial component is six live-work condos on the ground floor, which is an interesting concept, although I think they need to figure out how to describe it better, because right now it just sounds like another condo.
Property, is it, is it like that weird building on the corner there?
It's that weird church thing, and then the single-family house. Lee and Park.
And then there was also that proposal for moving the Seventh Day at Venice, which, you know...
They're looking to expand.
Because of its architectural interest.
All right, I want to make a quick plug for the run for the schools on September 17.
Can I do walk, walk fast for the schools? Is that cool?
Walk fast, kind of one mile and a 5K.
I wish I did it later. After doing Fall Festival all day long, it's exhausting to get up early next day.
8:00 a.m.?
Yeah, stay up.
Absolutely. Great.
I'll make my children go.
They should. I will be out at 5:00 a.m. setting up the course, so see everybody there.
I'll be there.
All right, anything else?
No, I have some, I, this is not, I don't know, this is kind of a weird thing, but, so I got contacted by one of the neighbors on Sycamore, so you remember, that was the one lot in the...
Split by Fairfax County or by...
What we allowed to be split, kind of, and then the Fairfax County lots that could be split. And then we, well, I didn't vote for it, but we voted, we split vote on it, but we ended up going ahead and doing it so that there's three lots that are kind of the same size instead of one regular lot in the city and whatever. So I was contacted by the owners of the most adjacent lot, the one that is adjacent to the City of Falls Church lot, and they asked me to talk about some of the difficulties they're having, because at that meeting, we had said that we wanted to make sure everything was followed, and it was very done right. And so what's happened here is that they and the developer are in a dispute on where the property line is. So the developer says that the property line is where their fence is, and it says, "I'm tearing your fence down." So they went and got a survey, and their surveyor says, "Your survey is incorrect." Their surveyor's saying the property line is where their deed says it is. So they're in a dispute, about a seven-inch dispute, not a lot, but it takes their fence down or not takes their fence down. And if, if they're correct, the house is going to be, not have the proper setback. It's going to be have a less than 10-foot setback that it's supposed to have. So, because it's a substandard lot, it's allowed to have, but this is one of the, by allowing that lot to become substandard, they have, the house is closer to them than it would have been if we had left the lot the way it was. So the house is closer, and now the house is even closer. So the problem they have, and this is not something we can deal with, but I wanted to mention it to staff, and I was hoping Mr. Snyder might be here, because I know he is the administrative head over zoning as well as planning, that they asked for a stop work because at this point, the two surveyors are in dispute. They think work should stop, and that they shouldn't keep building it when it's probably not in the right location, by any, by both surveys, it's not in the right location. They have been refused to stop work at least so far. I suggested to them at this point, the only thing, their only recourse is to appeal to the BZA, the stop work, that the stop work hasn't been put in. But the thing that came out of it that I think is really interesting, and it's something that I'd like the city staff to discuss, is that in writing, they were told by our zoning administrator that he can allow up to a six-inch error at will. But the problem is, that the developer's been told right now that if you build where you're planning to build, it's wrong, so that's not an error. An error is when you build it and it's, "Uh-oh, I was off." And she, I mean, I just say Alexandria and Fairfax does allow for errors, but they have a written policy, and they have things in their code. Arlington does not allow for errors, and therefore doesn't have any code or written policy, and it turns out, we do not have a written policy for errors, so we're just doing it when we feel like it. So I just, I think that that's something that the staff should talk about, that if we're going to allow errors like that, that we should at least have a written policy, and we probably should be putting it in a code, and that's something for us. So if we, we should probably amend the code to allow for errors, because otherwise, it's really basically given a variance and taken the role of the BZA. So if you're off that, you should be going to the BZA for a variance. So anyway, I just want to mention, and so there's a struggle going on, and I think we're going to see, it sounds to me like they're probably going to end up going to Arlington Court instead, but there's going to be something going on there.
At the day, it's probably a civil matter. I mean, I think the city, I mean, and there are strict rules about stop work quarters, I mean, because, you know, you're, I don't know the particulars of that, what goes on. I mean, it's my neighborhood, so I know the lot, and I remember the case very well. I know the lots. I mean, ultimately, it's a civil matter, I think, between the lot lines. I mean, I think the city needs to, the city, when they approved the building permit, you know, and, you know, they're basing it off the, you know, a survey that a licensed surveyor in the Commonwealth is certifying is correct, and if these folks are now disputing the presence of the line by several inches, you know, ultimately, it sounds like a civil matter that'll wind its way into the courts if that's the ultimate way. I mean, as far as administrative errors, I think that's right, yeah, there is some small amount of administrative leeway that the zoning administrator can do, but the idea of having, in Fairfax County, you can, there is provisions to allow for errors up to 10% that can be done administratively through a process. Beyond that, you can ask the BZA for, to go beyond that. So the idea of looking at that, it probably isn't a bad idea, because, you know, things do happen, even in the best of circumstances in construction, you know, when you're talking about, you know, feet and inches, you know, things, things can and do go wrong, so I mean, I don't, I think that's probably a good idea, without saying who's right or wrong in this particular case.
I think the real issue for that family specifically is that they asked Fairfax County, they asked Alexandria, they asked Arlington, and the two localities that allow for errors sent them the written policy and told them where the code was. We don't have written policy, we have no code allowing for it, so it's a little squishy. And then Arlington doesn't allow any errors, because Arlington says, in this day and age, with surveying tools, people shouldn't have errors. So they're, you know, they're very hardcore about it. So I think that's an issue, and I agree with you, I think it probably is a civil matter, but I do think if you have two licensed surveyors in dispute, and a deed that is different than what the one, the developer's surveyor's saying, I think that warrants a stop work, but that's logic to me.
Those are old lots, I'll tell you that. The lots in that neighborhood were platted like in like 1908 or something, so you're talking about very old lots that were platted by meets and downs, and, you know, before modern surveying techniques. But yeah, it, I mean, with all that, yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, there should still be, having a procedure for handling mistakes or errors or whoever we want to call them, just makes sense so that there's no, you know, so that the public or any landowner, you know, knows there's a process to follow, as opposed to just feeling that the zoning administrator can just, depending on how he feels that day, you know, decide, you know, okay, in this case, now it's okay, tomorrow it's not. So I agree with you there.
That was just my point, that maybe that's something, a code change we could think about. That way, if there's a process, and you know what's going to happen if you have an error.
I was thinking the other day, when, with all the teardowns that go on and everything like that, and we've had about three, possibly four over in our neighborhood, which is very unusual, but the wear and tear on the roads by the big dump trucks and everything, we should look into having some sort of a fee that goes along with permitting, you know, of, you know, damages done. I mean, these are huge, and there were, like, for this one house today, there were about four yesterday, and about three more going up on Tracy, right past my house. And washing gas is tearing apart the entire Seaton Lane, so that's going to be just, particularly with school open now.
Any other comments? Mr. Fuller, the planning director report?
Yes, just on the last item you were discussing, we're aware of the issue on Sycamore. This position is, as you described it, is, and Mr. Krasner described it correctly, as the staff position, and I understand the policy position discussion you had as well. But Mr. Krasner was correct, and that is our position on it. It's a civil matter, you have a civil engineer that certified a plat in one case, and you've got another surveyor that has something different, and it's not something that the staff can reconcile, you know, it's between private parties at that point. And we've had this dispute on several other subdivisions in the past, and we've consulted the city attorney, and that's our standard procedure, is that, you know, we're not going to get in the middle of that, because there's really no way for us to resolve it easily, so. It's all between themselves. Other item that was mentioned, Broad and Washington, there was a neighborhood meeting, the Lawton neighbors, it was one a week ago. There were some ideas that were generated a week ago, the developer came back and presented significant changes in the height of the building setbacks. I would say that the neighbors were pleased, and they asked for some other secondary considerations, and the developer is going to come back and meet with them once more in another week with addressing those secondary comments today that were received, and I think they're targeting to come back in a work session in October, mid to late, so at this point. Haven't heard anything from Mason Row Founder's Way, other than we had a meeting about three weeks ago, and they were talking about some of their fiscal impact, and how they were working on getting some leases and commitments from some of the major tenants, and that's the only discussion we've had with them, so those are both pending at this time. Then Mr. Rankin described the other proposal on Park Avenue that the EDC heard from Envy Homes on the condo with the work-live units. And so we're in discussion with them on trying to get something more significant in terms of the commercial element on that, so proceeding on that basis. In terms of our agenda, the next meeting on September 18, we have two work session items and one action item. The action item we anticipate is the sale of the Miller House at 366 North Washington, that is going to be a group home. I mean, it was the previous use, it'll be a new, different type of group home in terms of the target audience. We're expecting a referral to you from the September 11 city council meeting, so we'd have that on the 18. That'd be your only action item. Then on the area plan for Area 8 on the West End, that would be before you as a work session item, where we would discuss sort of the objectives and strategies and where we are on that, and get a little more guidance. And then the second would be the Downtown Plaza, be an update work session on that, so you'd have those two work sessions. That's what we anticipate. After that, the agenda's looking a little light, so for now.
Right, light agenda.
Is Area 8 the school property?
Yes, it is.
Okay, because that came up, you really spoke very well at the meeting about the need to really get the zoning in there.
Yep. Yeah, and you were discussing earlier, the presentation from the consultants on the campus that we received the other day. I know they're downstairs doing that again tonight, if anybody would like to get a little more information on it, they might still be there. If and when the referendum's approved, then we would be looking at the land use designations and zoning designations for the property up there as part of the initial task associated with what they described as an 18-month process to finish with, you know, contracting for one group.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other comments before we adjourn? We are adjourned.